Good morning, everyone. On behalf of Mayor Pro Tem Tully, my fellow commissioners, Manager Madrid, Clerk Torres, I'd like to welcome everyone here this morning to our June 10, 2020 meeting.
We're getting feedback.
All right, all right, all right. I'm still getting feedback. Could I ask everyone out there at the go-to meeting to please mute your phones or your tablets, please?
There's one caller.
Caller number two, could you mute your phone, please, or your tablet?
Oh, they got disconnected. Still.
They're still. Good morning. Okay, now it's fine.
Is that better?
Is that better? No, we still got feedback. Caller two's gone now. Caller two's gone. Oh, it's right here, push me on yours. Oh, okay. Finally, finally, here it is now. Thank you, thank you. All right, let's start over again. Good morning. At this time, on behalf of Mayor Pro Tem Tully, my fellow commissioners, Manager Madrid, Clerk Torres, I would like to welcome everybody here to our June 10, 2020 meeting. It is now 9:02. I will call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll? Honorable Sandra Whitehead, here. Honorable Brendan Tully, here. Honorable Paul Baca, here. Honorable Randall Aragon, here. Honorable Amanda Forster, here. Madam Mayor, we have a call. Thank you. The next item on our agenda this morning is Item 2, Silent Meditation. At this time, I would like each and every one of you to please join me in 15 seconds of silent meditation, remembering all the things that are happening around our world today in our country, and we'd like to keep everyone safe and happy. Thank you. The next item on our agenda this morning is the Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner Baca, would you please lead us in the pledge?
Our pledge of allegiance is that of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda this morning is Item B4, the Approval of the Agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as submitted?
Commissioner Forster will make that motion.
Mayor Pro Tem Tully will second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as submitted. Are there any further questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion carries. Thank you. The next item on our agenda this morning is Item C, Public Comments. Please remember, anyone that wants to give public comments, you are asked the three-minute rule limit. Please identify yourself, name and address, and then we will let you know when your three minutes are up. Is there anyone that would like to give public comment at this time? If you want to give public comment, please unmute your mics, your phones, your tablets. Mayor?
She would like to give.
If you raise your hand.
Okay, I was just looking to see if there was anybody here first. Sophia? No, go ahead. I was just waiting because I didn't want anybody to zoom on and jump in and interrupt.
No problem. I'm reading a comment that was written by Leroy Henderson.
Please identify yourself.
Oh, my name is, and my name is Sophia Perron, 316 North Joffrey, Truth or Consequences. And Leroy Henderson, formerly resident of Truth or Consequences, now in Cucio. "Our community, our county, has become politically toxic, with Democrats becoming prey for extreme right-wing wackos. I don't know how many of you are Republicans or Democrats, but to me, this has become a place for hate speech and fear. I recently chided a local progressive Democrat for not competing or even showing up for the current election cycle. I called them weak, exclusionary, and alienating, and they are. But more than that, I now see they are frightened by scenes like we see on Ron Sullivan's fence across the street from this building for over five years, and exhibited by law enforcement and at ungodly churches. And what has been done about this hate and threats of violence? Well, from our theoretical political leaders, turn a blind eye, snicker, and agree with the violent rhetoric. Allowance of lying and non-action is what has created the protests against racism and violence, against blacks, Hispanics, and minorities in our country. Now the Democrats have to be looking over their shoulder. Local law enforcement is not at all apolitical, so Democrats cannot be assured of protection from extremists. And that old BS about they didn't really mean it, or it's just politics talk, are no longer acceptable. Don't believe me? Take a look at the national news and the pulse of the nation. Grow a spine and stand up for America as it was envisioned. Stop allowing lies and hate mongers to run this place. And my PS, this is an excellent document, is that somebody needs to do something, because we're down to 11,090 people on 4,200 square miles, and they're leaving as fast as they can, there's no decent housing for them to move into, and it's pathetic, and there's no leadership in this community, unless it's to get their fat butts on an ATV and ride around and make noise, or spend all day shooting at the gun range, practicing for what I don't know. But it's getting scary, and you're not showing any forms of leadership at all, Mr. Community Policing, et cetera. Thank you for your time."
Thank you, Sophia. Is there any other public comment out there? Is there any other public comment out there? At this time, I see no other public comment out there, so we will call it, just unmuted. Caller three, please identify yourself. Caller three.
I'm Fredo. Oh, again, is that who that is? Oh, no, that was just my question.
Caller three, are you still on the phone?
Good morning, this is Alzo.
Good morning. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
Did you have public comments, sir?
Uh, no, ma'am, not at this time.
Okay, thank you, and if I could ask you to mute your phone again, please?
Pardon?
Thank you. Is there any other public comments out there this morning? Hearing and seeing none, we will move on to our next item on our agenda, which is Item D, Response to Public Comments. Do we have any response this morning to public comments? Any response?
Madam Mayor, we did have a comment from Ike Eastfold that was sent in to us.
Okay, then we will go back to public comments, and I will have Manager Madrid read the comment from Mr. Eastfold, and I apologize for missing that.
Thank you, Mayor. It's a little lengthy, but I'm going to go ahead and read it word for word, because it's the only one. Dear City Clerk Angela Torres, attached to my brief comments on Agenda Item G2, Riverwalk Economic Feasibility Grant, this is the soonest I could respond to the PDF of the grant application you forwarded to me and I received yesterday. May be so kind as to bring these comments to attention of the commission? Thanks, Ike Eastfold. Address is 1301 North Silver, TRC. To the Honorable Mayor and members of the commission, the commitment of $10,000 of MGRT attached to this application for a $50,000 grant indicates that TRC may be required to commit additional unspecified funds, some of which may be substantial for later stages of the Riverwalk project. It appears that the city's contribution will fund involvement at the application phase of the Wilson Consulting Firm. Part of all the $50,000 grant may go to Wilson. The city's skimpy application lacks sufficient detail to evaluate its full impact on future budgets. There should be a full public hearing on the whole of the project, and the entire scope of what will be involved should be made transparent. Otherwise, this initial expenditure constitutes piecemealing of approval for a much larger set of project expenditures, part of all of which may be taken out of my MGRT receipts, city MGRT receipts. Will these funds also be tapped for future expenses? What would those expenses be, and how much? Is this physically responsible over the long term of several cycles? The city's present budget shortfalls require a much closer look at expenditure commitments like this one, which have an obvious potential to cause future budgets to inflate. The city should reveal maps and other hard data gathered to date by parties who have been working on the project and are the movers behind this grant application. What trail routes have been considered? What are the estimated costs of acquiring easements and titles to private land? What land uses would be allowed among different users? What mountain bikes, ATVs, or other motorized ORVs be included as users, as well as equestrian and pedestrian users? How would conflicts between different units be mitigated? How would adjacent private lands be protected from trespass? What would projected environmental impacts be on wildlife, scenic values, soils, air quality, water quality, noise, et cetera? If the National Park Service has been a partner on the early stages of this project, they should be asked to participate in the public hearing and share their data. Other groups and individuals should be similarly involved so that the public can see as much as possible of the project's scope. The full scope, including all costs of this project, cry out for transparency before the commission decides to commit MGRT or other taxpayer monies to its launch. Here Lee, Ike, and Sharon Eastfold.
Thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Eastfold, for that public comment. At this time, do we have any other emails on public comments?
That was the only one submitted, ma'am.
Mr. Hans?
I think, just show me my, you want to say something?
Did you have public comments? Did you want to give public comment, Mr. Hans?
So, can I?
If you want to, go right ahead.
I was unsure whether the public was allowed in or not.
Come on in. Come on up and give public comments, please.
Good morning, Madam Mayor and City Commissioners. Nice to be able to be a little more normal, if you want to call it that.
Are you normal?
I'm experiencing, over the last few weeks, a little problem. It's not my problem, although it is everybody's problem. I've been calling on a couple of occasions the police that never turn up, and we've got a tourist here who's a little dinky, I know, who's been harassed, and he really has been harassed. He's not the easiest person to deal with, I know, because I've had him at my place. But some of the attitude seems to me way out of line, and at this moment, it's very actual because of what's going on, the meeting, the House Judiciary Meeting about police activities and public activities is very actual right now. I'm sorry to bring this up. I'm going to write out what I'm seeing, because it's not one little individual occurrence, and it bothers me greatly. We are wandering away from where we should be and where we actually used to be. And I'm bringing this up so that maybe you can keep your eyes and ears open. It's not something we want to have, especially in a tourist town, and that really was the basis that I wanted to come and speak to you. Other things, I'm sure, will resolve themselves over time, not with the police, but with other things that have been going on, because everybody's been hampered by this COVID thing that has made a difference to everybody's life and intercepted a lot of, sorry, intercepted a lot of things that people have been trying to do, and so jobs have been harder, and reaction has been harder, because if we don't have the reaction we used to have, but it's coming back. So, I appreciate your time, and I appreciate the fact that you guys are moving on and getting things started. One thing I'm, sorry, this thing suffocates me. One thing that I'm perturbed about, and I've said this before, is the park. I think we've approached it in the wrong way, and that's my opinion only, because the park is the public venue for enjoying life, and it's something that we don't have now, and who knows when we'll have it again, but I think that dogs eating sprinklers is holding on them. Thank you, you have a wonderful day.
Do you do the same?
Listening.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there any other public comment out there at this time? Is there any other public comment? Hearing and seeing none, we will move on to our next item on our agenda, which is Item D, Response to Public Comments. At this time, is there any response to public comment? Commissioner Aragon.
Commissioner Aragon, thank you, Mayor. Relating to Ms. Perron's commentary, we are, you know, we're just, it appears to be, we've got a toehold and kind of hit the ground running with some of these projects, like things called American Organics, with the going into where Amens was, I mean, that's a big, a big project, and I'm really proud of that, so we're going to be hiring 50 or plus employees down the road. I take my dog on a bike run down Morgan Road down the end there. Dan Root has started some housing down there for seniors. It's going to be one- and two-bedroom housing, really nice. Mr. Madrid knows what I'm talking about. I see that coming, so I think we're moving along pretty good. The new board wants to make sure that, you know, we are a retirement Mecca. We are, you know, more, I know tourists is kind of a little bit less, but we're working on both, so I see us moving ahead, and I'm really pleased with that, next one to come. And as far as Hans, he's called me at least once a week about something. He's just, he was just concerned about several issues, think more than the park. Mr. Madrid cleared that up, going to start around September, it might get back to normal.
Yes, Commissioner.
And so we're moving ahead on that, and, you know, we just had things we had to do, so that's my comments.
Thank you, Commissioner Aragon. Is there any other comments from the commission this morning? Again, I would just like to thank everyone that participates for your public comments. Remember, your public comments are very informative to us, and we will take into consideration all public comments. Thank you. At this time, the next item on our agenda is Item E, the Consent Calendar. This morning, the consent calendar consists of E1, City Commission Regular Minutes of March 27, 2020, and E2, Accounts Payable for May. Do I have a motion to approve as noted?
Madam Mayor, this is Mayor Pro Tem Tully. Before we move to that motion, I do have a couple of questions that maybe we can clarify. If you'll turn to page four of our last meeting's minutes, at the bottom, it was Discussion Action Ordinance Number 715. There was some information that I feel needs to be included in those minutes. We did have a discussion about the loan repayment schedule, which Manager Madrid did provide, and that was also requested to be included in the publication. Not, any action needs to be taken, I think that needs to be amended in our minutes. It was not mentioned in there. And also, I have a question on page 10 of the minutes. Actually, it begins on page nine. The appointment of an alternate board member to serve on the Sierra County Recreation and Tourism Advisory Board. Now, we, as a board, appointed myself to serve. My question is, I was replacing former Commissioner Kathy Clark. Who am I an alternate for?
She was the alternate on there, wasn't she?
Yeah, but he's replacing her as the, I thought she was the...
Yeah, but she was listed on there as the alternate, so, and that's what you're replacing her for, as an alternate.
As an alternate for whom? Who, which of the other members of this commission is serving on the board?
Yeah, I have that question, too.
That is my question, and I'm sorry I didn't catch that at our last meeting. Because when I looked at our roster from the previous commission, she was the only commission member on that board, I believe.
See, and that's what I went off of, was the list that I had been given, and she was listed on there as an alternate to the board.
But really, he shouldn't be an alternate, he should be the board, the member, correct?
See, and I think maybe we can go back and look at and see exactly what that was and why it was listed on there as an alternate and correct that.
And again, I'm sorry, I didn't catch that at our last meeting. It struck me as I was reading over.
And I thought that too, but I never questioned it, because again, it was, it was a list that had been, you know, obtained from the office, and so I figured that she served as the alternate for anyone else that wasn't able to attend, and so, and I don't have, but, can we check into that?
Yeah, I'll look, I can't find it right now, but I'll look.
We will check into that and bring it back at our next meeting for a correction, and if we need to make the change and appoint an as the regular member to that board, is that okay, Manager Madrid?
Yes, Mayor, my impression was that she was a standing member, not an alternate.
Yeah, and it was listed on the sheet that she was an alternate, so, okay.
But your standings would not be in question now, Commissioner, you should attend the meetings.
And I wasn't so much concerned about that as much as, you know, in our minutes, making sure we have accurate information in our minutes.
And we will have, we will go ahead and stop the minutes with that, because that's the way we had approved it at last meeting, and then we will add it back onto our agenda for our next meeting to explain the actual, is it an alternate position or is it a regular position, and then make the correction at that time, if that is okay. Will that work?
It works for me.
Perfect.
So, did you, did you have some line if you want to add page four, then? I know I communicated.
I suppose at this point, it's a question for the rest of the commission, as we did have that as part of our discussion, that was a very pointed question that was asked, do we need to include that in our minutes? I think it was part of what happened during that meeting, going back to page four in the discussion of the debt repayment schedule. Do we need to include that in our minutes?
It's kind of up to you on the minutes. There, we can do summary minutes. The only thing that really has to be noted is what approval you guys made, what motion, but if you do want something included, I can go ahead and hand out.
Manager Madrid, let me ask, let me ask a question. Ken, is there, is there a sheet that we have that explains the process that we're taking, and can that just be attached to the minutes as part of the record?
Well, what we can do is just take the handout that was not part of the original packet and make it part of the public record. It's that simple.
And that's just, as long as we have active record, nothing concerning.
We can just insert it, and we'll do that with any other handouts.
Right, we can put it part of the package. Thank you, okay.
That being discussed, Mayor Pro Tem Tully moves to approve the consent calendar.
Commissioner Forster will second.
Thank you, I have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar with the two items as noted. Are there any further questions, comments, or concerns?
Page 11, Commissioner Aragon, page 11. Under Commissioner Aragon, important following. I've been, I got a call that somebody wants a service monkey like we have, so that needs to be corrected. It's a survey monkey. That's all right, I figured that.
I was going to the pet shop.
We do not need a service monkey, we need a survey monkey.
See, if you thought we were just curious, people are here. Okay, we will.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Tully, would you amend your motion to correct that to survey monkey instead of service monkey?
Move to accept consent calendar with the change on page 11, changing service monkey to survey monkey.
And then the Forster, would you correct your second, please?
Commissioner Forster will second that as well.
Thank you, I have an amended motion and second to approve the consent calendar as noted. Are there any further questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none, all those in, Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Honorable Sandra Whitehead?
Aye.
Honorable Brendan Tully?
Aye.
Honorable Paul Baca?
Aye.
Honorable Randall Aragon?
Aye.
Honorable Amanda Forster?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. The next item on our agenda this morning is Item F, Ordinances, Resolutions, and Zoning. F1, Discussion Action, Consideration of Amendments to Resolution 331920 pertaining to a Back-to-Work Plan for the City of Pris of Consequences. Manager Madrid.
Mayor, I believe that the requested language has been put into the resolution. I'd ask the commission, if there's any other discussion, to update today.
Thank you. Are there any questions, concerns, thoughts, ideas? Again, remember, this is a working document and continues to be a working document.
Commissioner Forster, should we have our ad hoc committee meet again, or are we just going to kind of go over, kind of, with this role with the governor's request?
Manager Madrid.
Mayor and Commissioners, I would, I would recommend, well, I would suggest that another meeting is not necessary. It just happens that what the task force recommended was announced by the governor that afternoon.
Right.
Pretty much. So, I think it may be a good idea to see what the next change looks like. If it looks like there's going to be anything, any major changes that we would need to take, the mayor has a conference call with all the mayors, representatives of the governor's office, and the municipal league every Thursday. So I think that would trigger something that probably a call to you, Commissioner, to call a meeting, if necessary. Other than that, I think we're right on the right track.
And basically, the last few caucuses that we had, they, there's been no changes from what we've been discussing here, and we've just kind of moved forward with our orders and process. So again, that's a great idea. We'll just wait, and I'll keep you informed and updated on what comes out of those meetings, and then we'll, we'll come back together and move forward.
So, Mayor, so with this being approved, when it's approved, you will submit it to the governor's office, is that...
Correct.
Yeah, we, every time we try, Mr. Forster. The next milestone is early July for the next stage in the recovery process.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, if there's no further questions or comments, I will ask for a motion.
Commissioner Forster will make that motion?
Commissioner Aragon, a second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consideration of amendments to Resolution 331920 pertaining to a Back-to-Work Plan for the City of Pris of Consequences. At this time, is there any further questions, comments, or concerns?
Well, yeah, I'm not sure about the wording of the motion, we're not really considering any amendments, actually. It's, I think we're just, I think you're really just affirming the resolutions already.
Okay, just affirming the resolution? Okay, so then we'll just take off, so, let's go back and I'll correct that, we're affirming the resolution number 331920 as noted. At this time, if there's no further questions, comments, or concerns, Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Honorable Sandra Whitehead?
Aye.
Honorable Brendan Tully?
Aye.
Honorable Paul Baca?
Aye.
Honorable Randall Aragon?
Aye.
Honorable Amanda Forster?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. The next item on our agenda this morning is Item F2, Discussion Action, Request to Extend Resolution 321920, Declaration of Health Emergency for the City of Pris of Consequences. Manager Madrid.
Mayor and Commissioners, this is an action that was taken prior to three of our commissioners taking office. This was to grant primarily the city manager emergency powers for anything that may have to do with the health emergency that had been declared by the governor. This is going to expire at the end of June. It was enacted for 90 days from requesting extension in the event that anything else might come up. I'll give you some examples of what I've used this authority for. The first one is I use it to postpone the rate increase in water... The first one is I use it to postpone the rate increase in water rates that had been scheduled for April 1st. I postponed the start of that until July 1st to decrease the burden on our citizens on their water bills because it is a very substantial increase. Also, we've had to consider some waivers of fees for businesses that were forced to close for a while and did not use our solid waste services. We also suspended the cutoffs of utilities. And we've also suspended the assessment of fees and penalties during the pandemic. Those are a few of the things. One other one is that we've used the emergency to purchase TPE, personal protective equipment. The measures that we have, that I've taken under this resolution, the declaration, have not been very drastic. And they've only been for the benefit of the community. We have made some purchases, for example, in the police department so that they would not have to gather in groups to do their reports. They would be able to do them much like we have here with networks. Other than that, I think the total amount of emergency expenditures, including food and personal protective equipment, has been less than $15,000 total. So it's not, it hasn't been a big financial impact. I don't see a lot of things that would come under this in the future since we've largely avoided a real pandemic here in our area. I would request that we do extend it for another 90 days, just in case.
Thank you, Manager Madrid, are there any questions, comments, or concerns?
Mayor Protem Tolly?
Go ahead.
Commissioner Aragon?
Oh, okay, I just wish to add that this was a very well-written document, kind of a boilplate for the state, I'm sure. We added our, tailored it and points the city manager as the person, basically, as the emergency manager coordinator. That is necessary and I'm very pleased with it.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Tolly?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. My question for Mr. Madrid and my fellow commissioners, as the state has relaxed restrictions on public gatherings, as we are now able to have our meetings, we're able to get public input. I'm questioning the necessity of this. I understand what it's been used for and it's, you've done a fantastic job, Mr. Madrid, thank you for that. I'm just wondering, is this still something that is necessary for us to continue operating with?
You know, that's a great question, Commissioner. This minute, I would say no, because I can do everything with the authority that I already have. But I'm not sure about tomorrow or the next month, or the next month. That's the just-in-case part. For the most part, I have the authority that I need to deal with just about anything. But the type of examples that I gave for the benefit of the community mainly are the kind of things that I normally would not have authority to do on my own.
Yes, sir, I understand.
So I know that doesn't answer your question. It's probably not necessary, but it is desirable.
Attorney Rubin, could you possibly add more to that?
I have an idea, I think we even discussed this back in March, but I think maybe the last sentence of paragraph J where it says this emergency resolution will expire in 90 days. We could put a phrase in there that says unless sooner terminated by the commission. That we, you know, if we determine next month that we don't need this, then we can put it back on the agenda.
Commissioner Aragon?
Yeah, kind of like what I mentioned earlier. You know, we're under a, you know, the state, the nation is still under this pandemic crisis. It's good to have something that's more delineated than normal. I feel like with my emergency management experience, someone needs to be in charge, someone needs to have the delineated responsibilities. And of course, as soon as this thing subsides, you know, we could do away with it. I think we need it.
So then we should just adopt what Jay was saying and just say that...
Yeah, and actually, and maybe to give you more to elaborate further, I think this is a good idea. You know, there are still things that are going on that, you know, yes, we're moving from one phase to another, but we're not back to normal. I mean, we're still, we still have a lot of restrictions. So I think it's a good idea to keep this in place. And then if the commission really, as I said earlier, if you feel that a month from now or whatever that we don't need this, then we can bring it right back.
So Attorney Rubin, at this time, we could just leave the document as is? And then if we may need to make any changes, at that time, we would bring it back and then just change anything? Or do you want to just add that clause in there at the bottom?
Why don't we do that?
At this time?
I think we should add that. Will expire in 90 days unless terminated sooner by the city commission.
Mayor, would Jay, wouldn't it still, wouldn't it still expire 90 days with that language?
Well, no, I guess the point is, okay, the way it is right now, okay, just to look at the dates here. This was passed on March 24, 2020. So under its own terms, it would expire on June 22nd. If we extend it, then you're going another 90 days, I calculate that would be September 20. So if we don't, if this doesn't come back again, then it would stay in effect until September 20. I guess the point would be if the commission decides in like July that we don't need this, then they can, they can bring it back with the language on.
So really, we should say that we are going to extend it another 90 days unless terminated sooner by the commission?
And that, that language works too, yes, thank you, Amanda. All right, is there any further questions, comments, or concerns?
Yeah, in fact, going with that, going with what Commissioner Forster said, we could say the emergency resolution will expire on September 20, 2020 unless terminated sooner by the city commission. We'll have the data.
At this time, I will stand for a motion to approve.
Commissioner For, Commissioner Forster will approve it with correction, according to what Jay just said.
Commissioner Aragon, second.
I have a motion and a second to extend Resolution 321920 Declaration of Health Emergency for the City of Truth or Consequences. Adding that this will be extended for the next 90 days unless terminated sooner by the city commission. Are there any further questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Honorable Brendan Tully?
Aye.
Honorable Sandra Whitehead?
Yes.
Honorable Paul Baca?
Yes.
Honorable Randall Aragon?
Aye.
Honorable Amanda Forster?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries four to one, four yays and one nay. The next item on our agenda this morning under Organizations' Resolutions in Zoning is item three, Discussion Action: Resolution 381920 Authorizing Acceptance of Water Trust Board, WTV, Project Number 5089, WPF, Funding Offer. Conveyance and Delivery Project Booster Station Improvements from New Mexico Finance Authority, Manager Madrid.
Mayor, Commissioners, this is an application that was submitted. And we have both Alfredo Dean, our engineer from Wilson and Company, and we have Tracy also available. Before I ask either one of them for a comment, I want to talk about a couple of things I think are key here. One of them is you have seen and will continue to see funding like this for all types of projects. Our priority has been and will continue to be infrastructure. This has to do with our water system. In the resolution, you see whereas the approved funding structure consists of a 40% loan and the amount of $256,000 and 60% grant and the amount of $384,000. This is an example of leveraging. Leveraging is probably the most widely-used practice for governments, local and state, to fund projects. The concept of leveraging is one that granting agencies, even legislature, even federal government like to see. Is when, when I worked at the Department of Finance, we used to call it skin in the game. If you give someone $100,000 just outright and ask them to do a project, if that project is a failure, they haven't lost anything. If they've got some investment in that project, they've got skin in the game, they're more likely, and in most cases guaranteed, to make it a successful, a successful project because they're using their own money also. That's the situation that we're in. So we have match requirements, where we have debt requirements. This is a standard practice throughout government. The way that, that this is funded is where we may normally appropriate money in capital outlay for improvements. Instead of taking $50,000 in, in this year and buying a small pump with that, because that's all we have available this year. We take that and move that into a debt service account where we can make payments on a loan like this. And by the way, water trust board funding, the loan portion, is very frequently forgiven so that we don't have to pay it back. That's a possibility here also. This type of leveraging is used, it's how most smaller cities fund their police cars. They use a law enforcement protection fund, which is, it's a small amount that's funded every year, but it's a definite amount that's funded. And they purchase police cars every few years. They always have that loan in place, but they never have to pay cash for the police cars. So I just wanted to highlight that. The other thing on the last page of the, where the pictures are, the second point, right in the middle where the exclamation point is, this has been, one of our biggest weaknesses, is a redundancy in case of pump failures. We have had to spend over $10,000 in the last two months for an emergency temporary pump because we don't have this in some of our infrastructure. This is going to be a key to not only properly regulating the pressure, but just making sure that we have water available. This is one of the major weaknesses within our system. With that, I'll go ahead and ask Alfredo or Tracy if you all have anything to add.
Thanks. So, thank you, Mr. Madrid, this is Alfredo Dean. So no, I think you covered it very well. The only thing I would add there is this will specifically cover some improvements there at the Morgan Street Booster Station where you've, right, you mentioned that you've had some issues there. And that is a very critical pump station, that's actually what transmits water from what we're calling the lower zone or the southern portion of the city to your upper zone and the northern portion of the city. That booster fills your two tanks at the north end of the city. So it's definitely a very critical and main component of the system.
Thank you. Ms. Tracy, are you on? I don't see Ms. Tracy on.
I am. Good morning, Mayor, Mayor Protem and Commissioners. Yes, back in September, the previous city commission did approve a resolution for submission of a water trust board application. And this is just one of many applications that we have, are submitting and will be submitting in hopes of getting many awards to address our failing water infrastructure. So I just want to let you know that this is one of our key components and will provide much relief, hopefully, within our water system as well.
Thank you, Ms. Tracy. Are there any questions from the commission? Commissioner Aragon?
Yes, Commissioner Aragon, was that Jesse Cole, who's, who's the male talking?
Oh, that was Alfredo Dean, he's an engineer with Wilson and Company.
Okay.
He helped us through the application.
I was up there the other day at the Morgan, Morgan tank and seen that portable generator, portable pump that, I could see your issues. You're actually going to have two, Plan A and Plan B for each, is that what?
Yes, that's the plan for the overall system in the future.
That is necessary.
Yes.
It hits the lower side and the upper side.
Right.
Okay, and the total is going to be, including our investment, will be 712?
That's correct.
Okay. Sounds good.
Are there any further questions? Mayor Protem Tolly?
Mayor Protem Tolly, number one, for those who are not aware, this is crucial action right now. Mr. Madrid and I were speaking, last weekend, so a week and a half ago, we had some issues with our city water system. And for those of you who are not aware, they put restrictions on outside watering. This is something that has to be dealt with. So I'm not opposed at all to this particular request, but I would like to throw out a few numbers right now. Our current budget that we approved at preliminary adds $11.6 million to our total debt head, which will, with all of this combined, I believe, $31,000, $31,892,210. Now, as of 2019, the estimated population of TRC, 5,753 people, with an average per capita income of $23,449. So with this new proposed budget and the new proposed debt, we are putting a debt burden of $5,544 on each citizen of TRC, which is a 23.6% of our per capita income. I understand we have to do something about this water, but there's an issue here. The Government Finance Officers Association recommends no more than 6% to 10% of a debt burden on per capita income for your average citizen. So while we definitely have to do something about this water issue, our infrastructure is crumbling. And again, this particular item, I have no issue with, but as they add up, as we are continuing to increase our debt load, I think we do need to do some serious work on the budget. And that's another issue I understand that'll be discussed at another time. I am wary of continuing to increase city debt. This is, I mean, if it continues to go up like this, it's not sustainable and it is a cause for concern. And again, city manager, fellow commissioners, this is one that we can't really sit on, we can't wait. We've done deferred maintenance for too many years and it's catching up to us now. I would strongly urge that we exercise caution when considering taking on any further debt on the city budgets.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Tolly, Manager Madrid.
To address your concerns, Mayor Protem, that the burden on the taxpayer that you referred to is valid. However, this, this debt service is funded through an enterprise fund, not a general tax levy, not a general income tax or property tax or gross receipts tax. The ones that will have the burden of paying this back are the customers in proportion to their use. So if we have higher customers, for example, I would consider the hospital or the schools, higher usage customers for each gallon, they pay a higher proportion. So our, it doesn't create an additional burden without additional usage.
I see.
The debt service is based on the revenues of the enterprise fund, which is based on consumption.
Sure.
And that's one of the reasons that we have enacted the water rate increase that we did.
Yes, sir.
And the sustainability of those are looked at a lot more closely by our funding entities and our auditors and actually by ourselves. So I can assure you that there are a lot more eyes on these things than us. And, and I understand your concern. I think the concern was brought about by, by someone that does not necessarily understand where the burden is going to be. And absolutely, we do not want to increase the basic tax burden on our basic population, no.
Thanks for clarifying, I appreciate it.
And Mayor, Commissioner Aragon, Mayor Protem Tolly and Mayor, I had a talk with Mr. Madrid about this, I did the math and, you know, the burden, the debt burden is what Mayor Protem Tolly mentioned. But according to DFA and so forth, they don't give grants and loans unless, if they feel like that that debt burden is unusually high. So we got the blessings by getting the money. So we're assured that, you know, we're not messing up.
They keep great tabs on us, let me tell you. All right, are there any further questions at this time? Hearing none, I will stand for a motion.
Mayor Protem Tolly moves to approve. Or accept, excuse me. Commissioner Barco, second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number 381920 Authorizing Acceptance of the Water Trust Board, WTV, Project Number 5089, WPF, Funding Offer. Conveyance and Delivery Project Booster Station Improvements from the New Mexico Finance Authority. Are there any further questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Honorable Amanda Forster?
Aye.
Honorable Brendan Tully?
Aye.
Honorable Sandra Whitehead?
Aye.
Honorable Paul Baca?
Aye.
Honorable Randall Aragon?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. The next item on our agenda this morning is item G, New Business. business. Uh, G one, discussion action, authorize and approve acceptance of NMFA local government planning fund grant award number PG five-two-three-nine for sewer asset management plan. Manager Madrid.
Mayor Commissioners, I'd like to refer you to the letter from the Mexico Finance Authority that refers to the city received additional approval by NMFA for a grant for a hundred percent of the cost of the planning document up to fifty thousand. This is a pure grant. There is no leveraging or matching involved in this. This is for a, the asset management plan for sewer. We're already going, uh, through, uh, preliminary engineering report, similar plan for the water department. This is for sewer system and, uh, that's a pure grant, and I recommend your approval.
Thank you. Are there any questions, comments, or concerns? If not, I will stand for a motion.
Commissioner Forster will make the motion.
Commissioner Aragon, second.
I have a motion and a second to authorize and approve acceptance of NMFA local government planning fund grant award number PG five-two-three-nine for sewer asset management plan. Is there any further questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Honorable Paul Blocke.
Aye.
Honorable Amanda Forster.
Aye.
Honorable Randall Aragon.
Aye.
Honorable Brendan Tolly.
Aye.
Honorable Sandra Whitehead.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is G two, authorize and approve acceptance of NMFA local government plan fund grant, award number fifty-two forty, economic development feasibility study for the city's River Walk project. Manager Madrid.
Mayor Commissioners, uh, another letter from the Mexico Finance Authority, uh, giving tentative approval, conditional approval, uh, for a grant from the Mexico Finance Authority, a hundred percent grant for the cost of the city's River Walk project. Now to address some of the concerns that were mentioned earlier in our public comment, in regard to the lack of community involvement, this whole, uh, concept was developed because of community involvement. There was a group that was formed and, uh, came, they first day went to the National Park Service, and they came to me and involved the mayor also, uh, to see if we would support this type of project. Uh, the answer was yes. Uh, this is a result of that effort. There's going to be other efforts on, on, uh, on other groups' behalf. There are no plans. There is no construction. All we have is the idea currently. This will help forward that to develop a plan, to find out whether it's feasible to actually undertake this project, and if so, what, what would the, uh, the different items be within that project? Would there be vendors? What type of path? How close to the path? Uh, would there be, uh, access and egress to the river? All those things, none of which has been decided, all of which has been discussed. This is a good thing from the community. We ask you to approve it, we ask you to approve it for the community, just a plan, a hundred percent grant. Thank you, Mayor Commissioners.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Forster.
Um, yeah, going off of our public comment, he wrote about having a commitment of ten thousand dollars in there, and but this is saying it's a hundred percent grant, and he's worried about if the city's going to have to contribute more to this as, as, um, this project, um, moves on. So can you address that a little bit?
Yes. And, and Commissioner, I hope that the city does have to commit more funds to this project because that would mean it'll be a successful project and it'll come to fruition.
Great.
So yes, if, uh, we're not going to get it for free, it will cost, and I hope it comes about.
Great, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Madrid, where, I've heard about this a couple of years ago. Where, basically, would this be, on what section of the river?
It's on the other side of the river. If I'm thinking properly, it's, um,
Kind of where the river bend.
Well, river bend, but it's also across Rotary Park and all of that area. They're looking at, uh, trails and tracks and walking trails and riding trails and, and they're just looking at a whole bunch of that we've discussed for.
And this is, this is obviously was discussed before we came, um, in, onto the commission. So I have heard about something, a bridge across. Is that, or is, are they going to have to access this from behind the river?
We, we are looking, and we have discussed and are talking currently at putting two bridges. One at Rotary Park, which would go across from Rotary Park, two across the river in that big opening, and then another one is at, in Williamsburg. Um, these are just discussions at this time and, and kind of ideas and thoughts, but we would like to open that whole back area up for the purpose of trail runs and trail hikes and just activity, picnic tables if you float the river and wanted to go across and want a picnic or, so there's many ideas that have been floated around. And, and so this is one great project here is a river walk. Um, I mean, we've talked about that. I know when Commissioner Park was on board, um, she always wanted a river walk, as well as a bike trail. So, you know, again, like Manager Madrid said, we're not going to get anything for free. It is going to cost us, but just think about the improvement that it's going to be to our community and to our, uh, the attraction that it's going to bring to the people that come to visit.
Yeah, absolutely. The tourism that it'll bring is huge. Um, Caballos is one of the, I mean, one of the best, even ATV trails and hiking trails in New Mexico that people are very much drawn to. So that, that's really good. I like it.
Thank you, Manager Madrid.
One, one more comment. Uh, this is for a study, to develop a plan. We're more likely to get more external funding if we have a plan. No plan.
No money.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't fund it either.
Awesome.
All right. Are there any further questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none, I will stand for a motion.
Commissioner Forster will make the motion.
Commissioner Aragon, second.
I have a motion and a second to authorize and approve acceptance of NMFA local government planning fund grant number fifty-two forty, economic development feasible, feasibility study for the city's River Walk project, as noted by Manager Madrid. Um, is there any further questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Honorable Sandra Whitehead.
Aye.
Honorable Brendan Tolly.
Aye.
Honorable Paul Blocke.
Aye.
Honorable Amanda Forster.
Aye.
Honorable Randall Aragon.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. The next item on our agenda this morning is reports. The first manag- the first is city manager's report.
Mayor Commissioners, I have a few brief items. The first one is the swimming pool. We're continuing to collect data on that. Uh, for example, we're letting the water of the, the, the level of the water in the pool drop to see when it drops, to see if we can find a correlation between that and the leak. Um, we're also, uh, we will, we will be proceeding with a ground penetrating radar in any case, no matter where the leak is. But we want to determine whether the leak is in the infrastructure or in the pipe system itself. We, we're not there yet. Uh, as soon as that, a conclusion has been reached hopefully in a few hours. The other thing is Ralph Edwards Park. That project is proceeding. The rough grading has been done. Uh, we're now in the process of planning the schedule, which I should have a rough schedule in the middle of next week for the irrigation system, the sidewalks, and the sod. Uh, the gazebo may or may not be a part of this phase. Uh, it probably won't be in place by the fall because we're going to almost double the size of the gazebo. So it'll, it'll be a new one. But, uh, the priority is the irrigation system and the sidewalks. Once the irrigation system, uh, passes our inspection, then we'll lay the sod, and that, that'll probably be in, uh, middle of July. Well, it could be as late as, late July, maybe even early August. It all depends on the weather conditions, the progress on the irrigation system, and, uh, just the progress that we're making since we're having to self-perform a lot of the work. Um, we did all of the grading ourselves. We did contract with the surveyor to do the surveying, but the grading has been done by city employees. Um, I think the park should be available sometime in September. Uh, there will be a large fence going around, going up around the project. Now that we're going to get into creating trenches and putting in, uh, pipe and pumps, we have to keep, uh, access restricted a hundred percent for everyone's safety. So you'll see that fence going up in the next couple of weeks. Uh, the other thing is, as part of our reopening, uh, as I mentioned before, we delayed the increase in the water rates to July first. That's still planned to take effect to July first, along with the reinstatement of our fees. Uh, I want to reassure everyone, we're not going to start cutting people off on July second. No. The rates are going to affect, we will probably allow the entire month of July for people to make arrangements so that they'll have plenty of notice, plenty of time, plenty of time to plan, uh, how to catch up if they're behind. One thing that was revealed during this crisis is, in, in a lot of cases, people were actually paying their bills sooner than normal. So, uh, I'm not sure what the impact has been, but, uh, we're going to make sure that the impact is minimal on our citizens. So that's, uh, the, the not-so-great news about getting back to normal, as well, expecting people to pay their bills on a regular basis pretty soon. That's my report for the day.
Thank you, Manager Madrid. Attorney Ruland, do you have a report?
No, I do not. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Aragon, do you have a report?
Uh, just one thing. Um, Mr. Madrid mentioned Rotary Park. I'll be, I'll be president for the Rotary, uh, starting side first.
No question.
Another head assignment. The thing is, uh, there's been questions, and you probably know about it, on the upkeep of the park, and I'm being told right now that the city has received, uh,
Could you get up to the mic?
I heard that, I heard that, I'm sorry. The upkeep for the Rotary Park being president coming up July, uh, we just want to make sure that, uh, there's a cooperation on that. Uh, we're going to be setting up a meeting with you, Mr. Madrid. Representative Dow, she has some documents showing, you know, from what I'm mentioning, and, uh, we just want to make sure that the city helps the park. You know, we'll do the minor things to keep it going, but it is an attraction and people to use it. So I'll be getting with you next few weeks.
Commissioner, we're, we're actually, uh, working on that, on researching on the boundaries and things like that. We are committed to, to the community in that way. It had been kind of, seemed like a gentleman's agreement.
Right.
And, and, uh, that's, that relationship has, seems to have deteriorated a little bit in the maintenance of the park. But the city's committed to.
Good. Okay. We, we'll be getting with you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Madrid. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Aragon. Commissioner Forster, do you have a report?
Um, yeah, regarding the park, um, the plans that I remember seeing that they didn't have parking along the river, um, but I have had concerns of people that brought up that there, that they have seen a plan that there was going to be parking lots along the river. And so I was just kind of clarifying what that plan looks like.
Uh, yes, we will have some parking along, not right next to the river, but on that side of the park. Yes, that's the, that's the park that can be opened and closed. It's gated. But, uh, yes, the primary parking is, I don't know what my directions are, but closer to the basketball courts in that area.
East of the park?
East, thank you. But yes, there will be parking there. It will not be right on the river.
Okay, yeah, that was just the concern, that people would want for that to be the scenic or fishing or, you know, sitting out. So we wanted to make sure that that wasn't all filled with cars.
Nope.
Okay. And then, um, I just wanted to check on our advertising of our board, um, positions and how that was coming along, and if we had applicants that put in for that.
I did advertise, and I did also announce it over the radio. Um, we haven't received any applicants yet. Um, do you want, I was planning on bringing it to our next meeting. If we don't receive any applicants, do you still want it brought to the next meeting? Or do you want to wait until, to give them a little bit of time? I did also put a time limit of when we wanted the applicants to.
Well, I would think that we would need those members by then, their boards when those, yeah, July first. So, um, yeah, I think we have to get that done regardless, um, if we decide on just keeping people that are already seating or, or, um, at that point. But I feel better about advertising it. At least let's put out that.
This is for the governing board, right?
Yes, sir.
Only, really? That's all we're needing?
There was two, I think, that we advertised for, correct? Okay.
The board, governing board?
Yes. And then there was other various boards that we advertised.
Yeah, there were various, the other various boards that they can see on.
All right.
Okay. Um, that is all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Blocke.
I do have one.
Mayor Protem Tolly.
Nothing to report at this time.
Thank you. And, uh, my report is going to be really short. Um, I know that we have gone back to, um, a soft opening. I know that all of our city offices are back opening. I would like to extend a big thank you to everyone, um, for all their hard work during these, um, unforeseen times, uh, that we had. Um, kudos to all of the city employees, all the city, um, the staff, the department heads. Um, and I would like to extend also a big thank you to our city police department. You know, without our city's police department, I don't think that we would be, um, as, as, as safe as we are. Um, I do know that they get a lot of heat, you know, people asking questions and, and whatnot. But, you know, I've watched and I've seen them, and, and they're always out and about. They're always, um, checking on people. They're always doing what they need to be doing. And, uh, and so, you know, a big kudos to Chief Papadaka, Deputy Chief Baker, and, and all their deputies and all their departments, um, the staff, the secretarial staff, you know, they just have a big, uh, a big heart, and they take care of our community as they need to. So again, um, thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you. That's all. Is there any further questions or comments or anything? If not, the next item on our agenda is executive session. Do I have a motion to go into executive session under two items? Would be item one, threatened pending litigation, current and possible litigation, pursuant to ten fifteen one eight seven, and I two, real property, various properties pursuant to ten fifteen one eight eight.
Commissioner Bartolfo make that motion.
Commissioner Forster will second.
I have a motion and a second to go into executive session. Is there any further questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Honorable Randall Aragon. Honorable Sandra Whitehead.
Aye.
Honorable Brendan Tolly.
Aye.
Honorable Paul Blocke.
Aye.
Honorable Amanda Forster.
Aye.
Motion carries. We will now go into executive session in just a few minutes.